Sixteen, and I'm calling the regular scheduled meeting, or special meeting to order. All right, and just doing an unofficial roll call here real quick. Mayor Smith is, isn't that happening? All right, please all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mayor Smith is running late, but is on her way. I do not have any announcements right now. The mayor might, towards the end of the meeting. All right, and commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have any motions on the agenda? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. All right, moving on now to public comment. Please state your name and physical address when giving public comment. You have three minutes at the beginning of the meeting and at the end. Is there anyone for public comment? Go on once, twice. All right, public comment is now closed. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion on consent? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Moving on to new business, and I'm gonna just kick this over to our city manager, Karen Gobacs.
Perfect, thank you. So, a number of months ago, we had a brief discussion about our water rates and the water rate study that we had performed a few years ago. And a lot of things have happened in the past few years, and that has kind of given way to not following necessarily the model or the schedule that was presented in that water rate study originally, and some adjustments have been made. And a lot of that had to do with COVID and some other economic issues as well. So, that has changed the model and the needs that we do have within our utility funds. And this does tie into the budget, where we are at right now in discussing the next year's budget for our utility funds. And so, the commission had tasked us with updating the water rate study with REFTELUS. And we do have Colin Drat here, who will be presenting on the updated rate study and model. And there are a few specific topics or initiatives that were requested to look into. And some of that revolves around like the affordability and some of the other structures that we have normally followed, but then also have been introduced, new ones that have been introduced to some of the communities, specifically about water rates. So, without further ado, I do want to introduce Colin Drat from REFTELUS, who will be providing us an update on our new updated water sewer and stormwater rate study. And then this will also kind of tie into our budgets, which are also presented to you for the stormwater, water and sewer funds as well.
Thank you, city manager, I just wanted to say thank you to Pro Tem. My apologies for being a few minutes late. Working on technology for those who are tuned in from home.
Thank you. Okay. Let's get into an agenda, I'm just gonna move this up just a hair here. Okay. So just in terms of the agenda for tonight's discussion, I've got really four topics, and then just kind of a note for additional Q and A at the end there. I'm okay with being stopped in the middle, so if you have a burning question on a slide, you know, feel free to stop me, otherwise, you know, we'll have time at the end, obviously. We'll start off by talking a little bit about just some general trends that are facing the industry that I think kind of apply both here and kind of throughout the country that are impacting utilities as they look to provide service to their customers. We'll look at the utility financial plans, which are really kind of set out there to identify the needs of the water, sewer and stormwater utilities in terms of expenditures and projected revenues and adjustments to revenues to ensure that we're able to continue to provide safe and reliable water, sewer and stormwater service. We'll look at bill impacts from proposed revenue adjustments coming out of the financial plans, as well as talk a little bit about customer assistance program options. Okay, good. So just in terms of general, what I'm calling headwinds, there's a few things that have changed since we last talked, would have been a virtual meeting. And one of the most significant is just an overall increase in inflation. And that's, impacts everyone, it impacts our customers, but it also impacts our utility. Because all of the things that we buy, that we need to provide the service, have increased in cost. Some examples of that are chemicals have increased pretty substantially, both for water and wastewater treatment, so that's something we face, as well as the cost of materials and supplies to do the construction work that we do. And with that, I think we'll, we're already starting to see it, and I think it's gonna continue on into the, into the future to kind of combat that inflation, we're gonna see increased interest rates, which impacts our ability to borrow. Historically, rates have been pretty low, but to kind of counterbalance that inflation, we'll see interest rates start to rise as well. So, between that, and just the cost of doing the capital improvements that we need to do, we will see the cost of those things tend to go up, certainly in the near term. That second bullet just talks about construction costs, I mentioned that a little bit. Another thing that can, can happen is supply chain issues. So just getting the things that we need to do the work that we do, and sometimes even if you're able to get it, it is more expensive. But that is an issue that we've kind of observed nationwide as well. And the last one is just labor shortage, so just trying to hire the people that we need to be able to do the work that we need to do. So not necessarily new people, but just filling positions that may be out there that we need to put people in. That's become more challenging. It's always challenging as a local government to fill those positions, but the increase of money kind of flowing out there from the federal government has increased demand for workers, which tend to get poached by the private sector. So that makes it more difficult for us to compete for those people. There's also declining per capita consumption. You know, every year, our customers use a little bit less water on average due to increased fixture efficiency, general conservation. So the challenge there is, of course, that our costs don't necessarily go down in the same proportion as, as the usage goes down, because most of the costs don't change with usage. The pipes in the ground, the treatment plant, the number of people we have are all fixed costs that aren't reduced, even if our customer usage reduces. So this is a graph of CPI excluding food and energy, and it's really just intended to demonstrate the change that we've seen just in the past year or so. Historically, we've kind of lived in this world of, you know, around 2% inflation. But then what started to happen in, you know, say the summer of 2020 is things have really picked up pretty substantially. And that's something that impacts everything that we do, and something that we'll have to adjust to. Now, the hope is that that doesn't become, the rate of increase is not likely to become permanent. But for most things, the increased cost is probably there to stay. The one exception to that might be gas, because fuel prices have, have kind of come back down. But that does impact our operations. This is just a graph of our consumption. So even looking, say in 2012, we're around 100,000 gallons per year on average for all of our customers, not just residential, but just per customer. And then now, we're closer to, you know, about 80. So it's come down pretty substantially. Little bit about the process before we get into the financial plans. What we're looking to do is essentially compare our revenue baseline to our projected expenditures. So if we didn't make any change to our rates, what would our revenues look like going out into the future, based on that projected consumption? And then from there, we add, layer on forecasted operating expenditures and capital expenditures, and basically compare the projected expenditures to the revenues to see if those revenues under existing rate levels are on track, or if they need to be adjusted to match the projected expenditures. And then our kind of guiding light is under four there. It's what adjustments do we need to continue to meet those financial targets? So, in Marquette, we're looking at, really at the reserve balance, which is, for water and sewer, it's 90 days of O and M and debt service. And basically, what that means is, we're gonna look at the minimum level of expenditures that we have going out the door. Got to pay operating expenses, have to pay existing debt service or additional debt service that we use to finance projects, and take essentially 25% of that and have that be a target reserve. For stormwater, we're looking at 60 days. This is a change from what we've been looking at in the past. And the reason for that is that, I think as we try to look at these plans and really refine them and make sure that everything's really dialed in, one thing that kind of stood out as we were talking about this is the stormwater revenue is essentially entirely fixed. So, the need for the reserves isn't as great, because the revenues aren't as volatile. So for water and sewer, if we have a really wet summer, and people aren't irrigating as much, our revenues could drop pretty substantially. But the revenues from stormwater don't really change based on the weather. So a reduced reserve target for that, we felt was appropriate. So we reduced that, kind of where we were trying to get to, to 60 days. Yep.
Sure, clarifying question.
Yeah, could you back up to the, the per capita consumption?
Yeah.
Want to confirm, so the 2014 spike?
Was that the polar vortex and us having to run water?
Yes, it was that, and then Mary also reminded me on the phone that that was a longer fiscal year, because we had a, I think it was a 14-month fiscal year. So that's part of that too. But yes, that, that's the let-run kind of consumption there.
Yeah.
I don't think anything was going on in 18 or 13. But if you take out 14, you get a little bit less dramatic of a trend, but probably still, you know, declining. Yep.
And then, and then related to that, well, maybe, that was, this is my question. On the night, are we currently, do we currently have a 90-day reserve? That wasn't clear to me, are we?
I think we're gonna get to that in a couple of seconds.
Okay.
Right, depends. We will, we will get to that, though.
Not yet, it sounds like.
That's a good question. Okay. Oh, okay, and the last one on here was increased cash funding of CIP. So historically, we funded most of what we're doing capital improvement-wise with general obligation bonds. There are a few reasons to maybe want to look at switching away from that. One is, we have a limited capacity to issue general obligation debt. It's, there's only so much of that that we can do. The other reason is that a lot of the work that we're doing is essentially annual kind of repair and replacement that we need to do at a certain level for water, sewer and stormwater every year. So there's a certain amount of the system that we need to be replacing every year. And even though those water sewer mains and stormwater, and stormwater collection system, even though those are going to last for a long time, there's a certain amount we need to do every year. So it's almost like, you know, at that point, it's closer to an operating expense, would be better to fund, start to fund some of that with cash. The upside to debt financing is you do get to spread it out over a longer period of time. So that, some amount of that is still appropriate. But we do want to recognize that, you know, due to that level of spending essentially needing to occur on a regular basis, that it would be better to, to start to try to cash fund some of it. So that's baked in there as well. Okay, a little more details on the projections. We've not assumed any kind of substantive account growth. That's pretty consistent with, with past history. There's things that, that may pop up, that would, you know, that, that could kind of bump that up, but nothing that's, that's super material that would completely change this. So, just in terms of projections, we're keeping that pretty much flat. Declining usage per account, that's been a historical trend. We've kind of continued that in terms of usage. And then, just kind of lingering COVID impacts that it could impact, you know, the distribution of usage between residential and, and commercial customers. In terms of expenses, we're, obviously, we're starting with the 23 budget. And then we are projecting inflation for 2024 and beyond. And the assumption on the 23 budget is that we've essentially incorporated a lot of the inflation that we've already seen into that budget. So it's really just how much more in 24 and beyond. So, we're assuming that, you know, in 24 and 25, it starts to kind of return back to that more nominal level, which is consistent with what, what a lot of forecasters are, are saying. In terms of capital, those expenditures through the end of this, we're almost done with this fiscal year, but are, are pretty minimal in terms of 23, that, the plan there. And we're assuming that we're gonna resume that, that prior level of capital expenditures in 2024. And the idea there is that, you know, again, we're starting to become a little bit more limited on the GO side, and the hope is that by the time we get to 24, we can establish more of a process for using the state revolving loan fund program. It does take a little, a little extra work to make that happen. There's a process that you have to go through, there are hard deadlines that you have to hit. But, there are a lot of benefits to using it too. The interest rates are pretty good, they're really good. And we're also able to finance things after 30 years potentially, whereas we typically don't go that long on the GO side. So that spreads that cost out over a longer period of time. One example of this, and this is another reason to be kind of into the SRF program and be aware of what's going on there, is the solids handling stuff. So a lot of that federal money for principal forgiveness and things, it's flowing through the state SRF programs. So to be kind of in tune with what's going on there makes it easier for us to take advantage of those funding opportunities. So if you think about, you know, getting 50% principal forgiveness on that one project, it's not only city cost, but it's, you know, mostly city cost. That makes a pretty big difference. So to the extent that there are, that other opportunities come up, or if we're just taking advantage of those low interests, that low interest financing from SRF, that makes, that makes a big difference. So the hope is that we're able to kind of get a process stood up for that, either internally or between the city and, and external consultants to, to kind of do that regularly. And that's something we see kind of throughout the state is, once you're able to get that process in place, it's easy to kind of keep it rolling. And we wouldn't necessarily need to try to do it every year, we could do things in tranches. So if we were to spend, for example, if we were to need, you know, $2 million a year in, in water projects, we could say, well, we'll do a three-year, you know, plan and, and put six mil, three years worth of projects and do 6 million in one chunk. And that reduces the administrative burden versus having to do it every year. So, that's something we had talked about in the kind of prior presentation a year or two ago. I think that still makes sense to, to investigate that, so we've incorporated that into the plan. And we're assuming that we're gonna go that direction for most of the financing for, for 24 and beyond. Okay. So this graph just outlines visually, for the water fund, a, a projection of the expenses and the existing revenues, and then the proposed revenue. And we'll get to the impacts of, of what that dash line looked like in a few minutes. But, basically, just as an overview, O and M's gonna be in that dark blue bar. That's going up based on inflation. We have existing debt service, which you actually see starting to kind of come down as things get paid off. And then the hope is that, instead of replacing that with an equivalent amount of new debt service, we start cash funding things. Which means that we're not paying interest on it, reflects the fact that we need to kind of do a certain amount of it every year. And it's just generally good kind of financial management practice to have a certain amount of cash funding. So what we're doing is essentially looking at, okay, how do we need to adjust that line such that we're able to fund those expenditures over time? So this is the, the graph of days' cash, as well as the kind of 90-day line. And, what it, you know, basically what that trajectory looks to get to 90 days by 2028. The last time when we were looking at maybe doing a 10-year plan for water, 28 is kind of when we got there. So, I tried to structure it so that with the updated data and information, we were essentially arriving at the same point as, as we were before. Rather than starting over in 2023 and extending it another 10 years. So this is the 10-year plan, but it's, it's a few years in essentially. So for 23, what we were looking to do on water was really not go backwards from where we were. So we do add to it a little bit. And then in 24, 25 and beyond, we're, we're making adjustments incrementally to get up to that 90 days, and then from there, it just, we're kind of hovering above that amount. There's nothing wrong with being over that, it's kind of a, a minimum that we're hoping to get to. On sewer, that fund is actually in pretty good shape relative to revenues versus expenditures. So if you look at 23, that line's actually flat. So this is an example of just kind of the prior action that we've taken, really putting us in a good position, and we're really starting to make progress versus where we started a few years ago. So on sewer, we're, we're looking at kind of holding steady, and then making adjustments to build in that cash funding and essentially, actually draw down the reserve a little bit to get back down to the 90 days. So we're actually above with where I'm projecting we'll be at the end of 23. There's no adjustment in 23, so we're not increasing anything to get to the 131. It's just basically at our existing levels, that's where we would end up. And we're able to do lower adjustments to, and basically draw that back down, back to the 90 days. And the benefit of, of having the money is you're able to do that. We can smooth into expenditures once that funding is essentially baked in. So we're projecting basically drawing that back down to the 90-day target for sewer. For storm, there's a lot of stuff going on. And the rates relative to the level of expenditures that need to occur are relatively low right now. So they still have a decent amount to go. There's a lot of capital expenditures required. It's, it's, on stormwater especially, it's very capital intensive, and less on the maintenance side. So that's kind of where you see those, the, the kind of capital component of the bar really start to expand there. So we are projecting some, some adjustments. That fund is also on the lower end of, you know, relative to the 60 days. And, you know, we see we dip a little bit in 23 with the adjustment we've got in there, but just slightly, and then look to kind of, you know, build that back up, you know, over the, over the near term there. So this summarizes all of the, the actual numbers that we used to get there. And there's a lot going on there, but I'll try to kind of walk us through each of these columns, and I think it'll make sense towards the end. So, the first three are the proposed revenue adjustments for water, sewer and stormwater. And what we're saying here is essentially, you know, for 23, we're looking at a 6.5% adjustment for water, no change for sewer, and 20% for stormwater. But, these two funds are the bulk of the cost. So, when you take these all together, you actually only end up with about a, just a, almost a 3.5% increase overall. I'm gonna skip over prior plan, we'll talk about that in a second. If you look at the dollar impact, it's just under $3 for water, no change for sewer, and $1.27 for stormwater, for a total of $4.21 per month for the typical customer. Now, just to kind of go back, that 20% for stormwater looks kind of like a scary number, but that's because those rates are relatively low now. So we're talking about $1.27 change on that rate. Or $4.21 when you combine them all together. And then from there-
Clarifying question, and that's for the average home, which is how much water?
4,000 gallons.
And that's 4,000 gallons a year?
No, a month, I'm sorry, yes, a month.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So if you look from there, we've essentially got a couple more, kind of larger adjustments on water and stormwater to kind of get to where we need to be. And then from there, we're really looking in the, you know, 3% to 4% range, which in this environment isn't really even inflationary, because it's so much higher. But, what we're hoping will be more inflationary adjustments once we get out to the, you know, 26 and beyond. Because at that point, we will have built up the capacity to fund our capital improvements at the level that we need to fund them.
Colin, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
On, where it says prior plan, this 10.37, that's the last time you came and presented to us?
Yes, that's right.
Which would have been a $12 increase, but so now we're recommending potentially like a $4.21.
That's correct.
So that's, that's positive.
Yeah.
And then the piece, I guess I would really want to focus in on is this, oh, now I lost it. But the total column?
Right.
$4.21 would be the average increase this year. And then we're looking at between $5, $6 or $7, $7 in the next immediate year, per year increase.
Right. That's right.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, no problem. And I added some kind of cumulative numbers here. So, these aren't adding up these- So these aren't adding up these, these rows, to be clear. It's the cumulative impact, so there's some compounding here. But essentially, what we were looking at is, you know, from 2023 to 2030, which is the, the plan that we should before, we were looking at a 45% increase over that period. And now that's been reduced to 39%. So the hope is, and, and this is the benefit of doing this type of planning, is that each time you look at it, it looks a little bit better. And even if it doesn't, at least you know kind of what's coming and why, and, or you're able to kind of course correct. So it's not that we're committed to all these other years, but it provides information about where things are going.
Commissioner Banzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick clarifying question. So, you know, we're starting to project out like a decade, right? Or you have the cumulative increase through fiscal 2030. Are those not in, are those figures in nominal dollars, or is there any kind of inflation, inflation adjustment, like real dollar?
Right. It would reflect the inflation that we've built into the operating expenses as well as the capital expenses.
Okay. So that's $48.27 more by fiscal 2030 in 2022 or $23, or in 2030 dollars?
It's 48, it's $48 more reflecting the impact of inflation over the, over that period from '23 to 2030.
Okay, alright.
Is it 2030 or 2032?
2030. And the reason it's 2030 is so that we could compare it to the prior ti, the last time I-
I see over there, sorry, now I see-
No, it's okay. I-
The microphone is right in the way of that for me, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, um, so I could have moved this yellow line up a little bit, but yeah, it's, it's through 2030, just to make it comparable essentially to the, the last time we looked at it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, just, and then in terms of dollars, you know, it's, it's 55 or 50, about $56, and that's been reduced to, to $48. And then even just as a note on the stormwater, you know, percentage-wise, relatively large percentages, but in terms of the dollar impact, you know, not, not quite as, as big of a dollar impact.
Commissioner Banzel?
So just to clarify, that the 48.27 there on the bottom for the total, that's only going out the 2030 numbers though, right? That's not including the next two increases?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Hill?
So this would start on October 1. Okay, so each one of these years is actually October '22 to September 2023?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you've probably said this, but I was taking down the detail, but basically, the reason that it's $7 less over time, why would, what would be sort of the way of explaining that? Why is it $7 less over the, over the, this eight years?
So I think there's a few different things going on there. One is that, you know, we, we may have slightly kind of outperformed our prior plan, so things just look a little bit better. I think, you know, we've tried to make some, make some adjustments, you know, where we can to sort of smooth the impact. And then we also, we also have reduced capital expenditures kind of in the near term, both, you know, this year and next year, which kind of bring those down as well. But we have brought that back into the plan. It's just there's a little bit of a, kind of break in there on that. But I think part of this is just some conservatism, which, which naturally comes off when you look at it again.
Just, just thinking about how to explain overall how to, how those numbers came down because it's, I'm glad to see it, and this, this breakdown is, is helpful. And of course, if you're using less than 4,000 gallons, you, all these numbers would be less since-
Correct.
So.
Okay. Any other ones on this one?
No, I think if we can just try to get through, I know our city manager would like to chime in on some of these funds as well before we get to kind of the broad questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Colin.
Yep. All right. I'll keep moving. These are the rates. I won't, won't pause here too long. We'll look at what the impacts of these are, but just for the purposes of, of including them there, water, sewer, and stormwater. And then these are the actual bill impacts. So before, we were just looking at the change. So what's the change per month? So if we're talking about the $4 or the $5, that's how much more per month? This is looking at, okay, what would that bill be combined water, sewer, stormwater? So in '22, it's, it's 1.24, and then in '23, it would go to 1.28. And then the thing to kind of keep in mind with this is I've got two bars there. So the light blue bars show that, that prior plan and what that, when we were looking at it before, kind of what things looked like, and what we've been able to do with kind of sharpening the pencil in a few areas. Some of it's timing too. Like I think on the, the solids handling project, for example, I think we had assumed that that would happen a little earlier than, than it's ultimately, than the impact of that will happen when we were looking at it before. So that just, to extend things happen later, that impacts things as well. But in general, you know, we've brought it down from, you can see kind of the 1.36 down to 1.28, and then by the end, you know, we're down $7 over where we thought we would be, you know, the same time, last time we looked at it. Okay. Little bit on affordability with the '23 proposed rates. So what, what we've done here is calculated a bill using, basically by census tract. This is just water and sewer, and that's because the way these metrics are typically put together is just for the water and sewer component of the bill, so I've kind of stuck with that. Stormwater is low enough that it would, you know, obviously looks a little worse with that in there, but it's, wouldn't materially change, I think, the conclusions looking at this. So across the top there, the 1 through 28.02 are the census tracts that overlap with the city. They don't match, you know, perfectly, but essentially they're geographic areas that the census uses to kind of break down information. And what, what I've done is calculated the bill by tract using the number of, average number of people per household and an assumption of, you know, 50 gallons per person per day. What would that, what would that bill look like? And you can see it's kind of different in different areas based on household size. And then we also have kind of the annual bill on that second line, the number of households, and then the number that would be in the, the bottom quintiles, so just 20%, and then the consumption per account based on the, the 50 gallons per person per day there. The last two items, or the, the last two in, in that second block there are median household income, and then the bottom 20% of household income. And then off to the right, we've got the whole city. So basically, what we're doing is, whenever you look at these sorts of things, we're always comparing the impact to some measure of ability to pay. So one way of looking at it is median household income. That, you know, the genesis of that is really the EPA and the Financial Capability Assessment. So EPA would require communities to make large capital improvements, to, to be in compliance with regulations, and, but they would also say, if you can demonstrate that you'll, that there will be an affordability impact to your community, we'll give you more time to, to essentially be in compliance. So that standard was around 4% to 4.5% of MHI was the way they looked at it. There's no kind of magic behind that number, but that's the number that they picked so that there was a standard to kind of judge everyone's program against. So if we look kind of at that level by tract, we can see that we're kind of in the 2% to 3% range in general. I don't think even with, I'm pretty sure actually, with even, even adding in stormwater, we wouldn't crack that 4% to 4.5%. Now, the one that kind of sticks out is tract five there. Two observations there. One is that there aren't a lot of households. That's actually the area that covers Northern Michigan University. So one kind of general caveat is that the data that feeds into this income information includes students. Anyone who's living in the city could potentially be surveyed. So this comes from the American Community Survey. It's not, it's not a census. They don't, they don't ask everyone these questions, but they take a sample, and to the extent that students are around, they would be asked the same questions. So that is a little bit of an asterisk on the income in general, but especially in tract five where it's very, very low. But if you look at the other areas where, you know, where it's a little bit more residential, there's a little bit more consistency in terms of MHI and, and the bottom 20%. And then overall for the city, you know, we're looking at a, an MHI of, you know, $43,000 and a bill percent of about 2.8%. Another way of looking at that is, yep-
Sorry, 28, I'm sorry if you said this. So there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and then 28.01 and 28.02. Did you say what those are? Are those just other names of census tracts?
Yes.
They, they're the other numbers of those census tracts.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit wonky the way that it's set up, but I think, for whatever reason, the numbering system works out such that there are a couple that overlap that just aren't consecutive with the prior seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, no, no problem. And then on the bottom there, we're looking at the, the bill impact for the bottom 20%. So one issue with the MHI is that by definition, half the people are, are below that. So what happens at that, at that bottom level? And you can see it does increase the impact there. There's not a, again, a hard and fast rule on that. It's obviously, you know, a greater percent of their income if they have the same usage. I think one thing to kind of keep in mind is that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're providing a, an essential service that, you know, be challenging to, to go without in terms of water, sewer, and then if you think about the impacts of flooding, stormwater, that's not baked into this. But we're essentially doing that at, you know, well, well under with the exception of 5, you know, 10% of, of even the lowest income levels. So it's not to say that there aren't customers, individual customers or pockets of customers that have challenges, and there are ways of dealing with that, but what I would say is the, the way you, you don't want to deal with it is by not funding the expenses that need to be funded to continue to maintain the service. And really, that gets to that, the last slide, which is kind of some of the customer assistance options. So just in terms of what's out there, some may be kind of familiar with the LIHEAP, which kind of impacts electric and gas utilities well. At the federal level, and it's kind of trickled down to, to state implementation of it, we now have LIWAP, which we're able to refer customers to. So it's for residential customers. They do have to be behind on their bills or disconnected, which is a potential challenge with the program, since if you're paying the bill, even if you're having issues paying it, if you're paying it, you wouldn't necessarily be eligible for this. But if you do get behind and you need help or there's threat of being disconnected, that is available to our customers. And it's my understanding that we, you know, if they are having issues, we, we do through the utility billing department, refer them to the community organization that, that handles that. We have leak adjustment policies. So if a customer has an issue, what I'll say on their side of the meter, which really doesn't impact the service we provide, but if there's an issue on their side that causes the bill to spike, we do have a policy of, of making an adjustment there, and that's not the case everywhere. And then also on the leak adjustment policies, and Karen has a little bit more of the details on this, but one of the things that, that is available kind of with, with the AMI, now that we have the data and, and the ability to connect to the meters, is a portal for customers to kind of be able to monitor their usage. So before, you might go a month, and you don't know till you get the bill that you've got a problem. So one of the benefits of AMI, though it does come with a cost, is it allows the customer to keep an eye on what's going on. The other nice thing is that we bill monthly here, so you don't have to wait until the next, you don't have to wait a quarter to, or, you know, every two months to figure out that you've got an issue. We also have payment plans that, you know, are available if, if folks get behind as opposed to, and allows them to kind of, kind of pay that off over time. So with that, we are at, any additional questions you may have?
Thank you, Colin. Nice presentation. We always appreciate you coming. It's nice to have you back in person.
Sure, yeah.
Then a minute. I'm going to turn things over to our city manager first, and then we'll start questions off with Commissioner Handley and go down the line.
Thank you, and thanks, Colin. I just wanted to kind of reiterate a few points that Colin had made in, in some of the slides that were presented here. In particular, if you recall our conversation a few months ago about the financial, financial position that we were in with our utility funds, and it kind of goes in, in line with the need for an increase, as unfortunate as that is. But what that really is covering is, is maintaining the infrastructure that we do have currently, while also improving it where we can, and continuing to offer, you know, the, the services that we do have. And what we saw with, in particular, the, or specifically the slides relating to the utility financial plans for water and sewer, that 90-day benchmark and why that it is, why that is so critical, and I think that even Colin spoke to why that's different than our stormwater even. But water fund in particular, we are not meeting that 90-day benchmark of having enough reserves in there, and that, that is reflected in our financial statements and can catch the eye of the state or, or any other investors potentially that would like to, you know, offer, you know, and jump on some of the bonds that we offer. So it's important to really address that, but it is also important to show the fact that we can get there relatively easily with the model that we do have. In particular with the water, like I said, fiscal year '23 will be 48 days, and we won't hit that 90-day mark until 2028, which, if we all remember a conversation not too long ago, how that five years is really showing us some light at the end of the tunnel. But that means we do have to stick to a plan, and we do have to be cognizant that that plan is meeting not only our current needs, which are our bills that we have to pay, that is payroll, that is contract costs of the chemicals that we're seeing a significant increase in, but also continuing to invest and preserve the infrastructure that we do have. So I wanted to make sure I pointed it out with water. Sewer, as Colin had mentioned, is a little bit different of a story. We are at the 90-day benchmark. That is good. That does allow us to kind of hold off on continuing an increase in that fund for one year, but making sure we continue to invest in that fund and put away some more money, and that does come through covering in cost increases, but also a little bit more. And then stormwater, that assumption to get to a 90-day benchmark or 90-day reserve has changed to be a little bit more reasonable. Colin used a really, you know, interesting example that if all usage kind of stopped with our utilities, stormwater doesn't operate with usage. It's continued cost and continued revenue as a flat fixed rate based off of certain things within your property. So that is why we changed that day to a 60, to a 60-day benchmark, which allows us to have a little bit more flexibility and, and allows us to have not as, not as significant of an increase as well. But one thing, one more thing that I wanted to touch on in particular was that, that AMI system that we do have with our meters and the benefit that that does create. It, it hits residents hard when they discover they have a leak and they've had it for a month already, especially those that are struggling to pay the bill already, or, you know, are planning to pay the bill that they have set. It also empowers residents to be monitoring their usage and find their own ways to conserve water and to, you know, control that bill and that usage cost in particular, you know, specifically. So that is something we are going to be rolling out to the public. We write, are going through some testing right now with staff, working out some of the bugs, working out, you know, some of the, the things that we think are going to be important points that residents need to, to pay attention to. So that should be rolling out in the very near future, and that means you can monitor your own usage on your phone after you- your own usage on your phone after you enroll into the program or to the app. So that will also help us empower our residents to put their own usage and have the control over that in their bill. That will help significantly. And then the other assistance programs that we do offer, we work with our residents. Every situation is very unique and very specific to their needs. So our finance staff is well-versed in that and continues to explore other options or other avenues to direct our residents and our users to have financial assistance as well. So just wanted to hit on a few of those points, clarify a few things, and kind of just open it up if you want to for questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
We'll start with Commissioner Hanley. Thank you.
Thank you. I just need... I need to say this number out loud because it's something that keeps in my head. We're looking at, after the end of 10 years, giving someone a $720 a year increase, correct? If you do the $60 a month times 12. It just seems like a whole lot, especially for people with fixed incomes. It scares me to look down this adjustments, and I understand we need to raise rates, but that is a lot of money in 10 years.
That's ensuing a lot of inflation over the next 10 years, too.
I suppose.
Today's dollar is going to be different than today. I mean, it's just... I hear you. Sorry.
But are wages going to increase with that, though?
Well, I think maybe the thing to keep in mind with that is, I think it's good to look over time, but we're certainly not committing ourselves to even more than one year at a time historically. That'd be the case this year. So I think the thing to do is, you don't want to do the bare minimum each year if you're going to end up needing to be higher down the road. But the flip side of that is, we can't evaluate it periodically and see where we are, and that's what we've done this time, and we've been able to bring that down a little bit. So the hope is that each time we look at it, it will look a little bit better. But 10 years is also a long time, so that's where the big dollar amount comes from.
I don't disagree. It's a frightening number when you look at it. Now, the other thing, when you said we were going to back down on the sewer because we're already above that, how do we do that? Do we just... Like, when we're above the 90-day benchmark at this point, you said we're going to take that back down to the 90-day. How does that happen?
So what we're doing is, we've got the money, and we would use that existing cash reserve that exists above the 90 days to fund expenditures. So the expenditures would reflect the use of that reserve.
Okay. But it wouldn't change rates at all, so wouldn't that just stay higher? So you're saying we do extra projects at that point?
No, it's just we're projecting expenditures and revenues, and what we're doing to use the reserve, we have revenues that in those years are below the expenditures, with the difference being made up by the use of that reserve.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
That's all I have right now.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you. Commissioner Hanley, impressive math. I do think Commissioner Hanley has a fair point. About a third of our city is retirees, and not all retirees necessarily have a large retirement they can pull from. They might solely just have social security. So when you're looking at that 10 years from now, how much more that could be, I don't honestly anticipate social security checks increasing by that size over the next 10 years. Then added with the fact we just increased taxes this year, again, adds additional strain to our residents. But one number I did want, if I was understanding this correctly, we were looking at doing a 10 and 1/2% increase this coming fiscal year, and we're now projecting a 3 and 1/2% increase. Is that right?
Let's look back.
3.41.
Yes. Yes, that's the increase in the typical bill. Part of what's going on there, too, and I may have alluded to it, but if I didn't, I should have, what we were doing before, because the consumption was going down year over year, is we were putting more of that increase on the fixed component of the bill. So for that 4,000-gallon user, if we needed an increase of X, it's really going to be that much higher because the fixed component of the bill is a bigger component of their bill. So the increase in the fixed charge was part of what was driving that 10.4%. And what we've done this time to help with the impact is increase both components equally, the fixed and the volume. So some of it is just adjustment of the plan, but some of it is not increasing the fixed charge as much as we were projecting to do before.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
Commissioner Hill?
Thanks. That was actually a point I was going to raise. That's a really important point for equity, that the fixed rates not rise so much. Two retired people and a family of four are paying the same fixed charge, even though one of them is using a lot more water than the other. So I'm really glad that we were paying attention to that. Let's see. Remind me, how did we pay for the AMI, the water AMI?
I do believe that was part of the JCI project.
So that's being... That's completely separate from these funds? That is those lease payments?
I believe that is... Actually, there are parts of that TELP payment that are baked into these funds in particular. I don't have that specifically... Mark, I'm looking at, do you have any information on the AMI meter, the meter portion of that?
No, it was funded through the JCI project, so it would be funded through the TELP payment, through the utility bills.
So the cost of putting in the AMI is actually separate from all of this? This is just the water system and your use?
The TELP payments are also included in these funds specifically.
Okay. I don't need amounts. I just wanted to know.
Yeah, and when you look back into the... There is one of our internal service funds that we do have that we covered previously, and I can get that fund number for you, also shows that TELP payment and that money coming in also from these funds. So it is recorded in here as part of that.
And that's, just to be crystal clear, that's not in the fixed charge and not in the rates. It's a separate number, and then that's going to end once that system is paid for? Or how do we maintain the AMI?
So it's incorporated into the cost and into the rates. So basically, what happened when we did the lease payment is, we got a total. It's this per year, right? And what we did is, we looked at it, and we said, okay, where is the money being spent? And we'll take that annual amount and allocate it to the different funds. So some went to general funds, some of which went to the area wastewater treatment plant, so much went to... So we broke it up that way, and it's essentially aligned in the budget. It says, TELP lease payment.
Okay.
So that's factored into this plan and incorporated into the rates.
And then for the question going forward, in terms of maintaining those systems, having to replace them every once in a while and updating to whatever Wi-Fi we need to have, how is that accounted? Is that a number not worth worrying about? It's a few thousand dollars, and it's just taken care of?
I don't know that I'd say it's just taken care of. I mean, it will have to... Things will have to be replaced and maintained periodically, and I think what we're doing in general is building the capacity to fund a certain level of capital improvements. But to the extent that we get to the point where, I don't know how long they last, but once we get to, say, 10 or 15 years or so, that's something we're going to have to start looking at, is baking in the replacement of those systems.
Yes. For example, our parking meters expired on us before the useful life, just because of Wi-Fi changes. And then we had that kind of thing. I'm just...
Yeah.
We just had a conversation about that. So it's...
That's the challenge with technology, is sometimes you get obsolescence before they... It's like, they're still working, but they don't work with everything else that's going on.
And then, again, sort of big-picture question, my piece, I don't know who can answer this. So you mentioned the lingering COVID effects. When NMU and the schools shut down, I'm assuming they're our largest water customers, and did that impact us? And is that a continued issue? Again, just to understand what happened clearly.
Well, I think, obviously, their flows went down, so there weren't people in the buildings, and they weren't using water. But those people were at home, using water, so it kind of balanced itself out somewhat.
I see.
You know, we don't have any perfect correlation there.
That's interesting.
Just seen a general decline in our flows, obviously, across the board.
Okay. And make sure I got all my questions. And so, yeah, so was there even... Our fixed costs, was that in one of the... Did you break it out that way? I guess you didn't, right? So...
The proportion of our costs that are fixed?
Yeah.
I did not. I mean, essentially, the only thing that's not fixed, in stormwater, is pretty much 100% fixed.
Right.
Water and sewer, it's really just the power and chemicals. So power and wastewater, it'd be power to operate the plant, we'd share in that. And then chemicals are based on the flows. And then, to the extent that we have lift stations, there'd be power for those. And then water, same thing, mostly the plant, power and chemicals. And then if there's any pumping, then we would need power to run the pumps, and that's based on customer demand. But aside from that, it's pretty much all fixed. So if I were to do it, it wouldn't surprise me if it were north of 90% for water and sewer.
Commissioner Hill, were you asking about the rates or the costs?
Actually, the rates, but it was interesting to hear about the costs.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, and sometimes that's, I don't say the secret sauce, but sometimes that's like the differences between communities. They do have differences in what they include, so that was really good to include. But I do want to point out on Slide 15, I think, Colin, if you wanted to just look at that and kind of show, at the top is really where your fixed costs are. And when you look at the average user, the 5/8 meter is what we're looking at there for our average user. And then in the bottom, where you see the general or tax exempt, the bottom of that first section, which says 1,000 gallons, is your commodity charges or your usage charges. And then when you look into sewer and stormwater, it's, I think, self-explanatory there.
Yep.
Is that helpful? It's a lot of information on one slide, so I know it can be hard to follow.
And as I said, again, the question of... I'm just really, really glad we're not just raising fixed costs as costs go up. It really helps spread things out. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the presentation. I think it was very illuminating and certainly deeply appreciated on a topic we are all much concerned with. A couple of points. Obviously, we're going to have to fight inflation, and that's going to be the bugaboo in the future, and will have wide impact on whatever we choose to do today or do in the future regarding this. But I think we have to bear in mind that, though we may argue about the rate here and there, everybody in this city, I think, is deeply concerned with clean water, both coming in and going out, and to maintain the technology that it takes to do that. And that really has to be an overwhelming concern, more so than are we paying an extra dollar every month or whatever, whatever. It's the end game that counts, and we have to be very willing to understand that and to fund it at the level that that is the effective result. Lastly, I may be the only one here that says I think we should raise the rates higher than recommended, particularly as it looks at stormwater. And my deep concern is that 100-year storm event that everybody around us has been getting. You might remember the horror story out of Houghton and the destruction they've had there, a recent event certainly in Dishramay. And it's only Marquette rolling the dice before it's us. Now, I think we intrinsically know that we have been doing more for a long time to prepare for that, and I feel comfortable in that regard, but I never feel safe. So if there's a way that we can tunnel some money into that type of activity, improving our capability to handle that storm event, I think we would be, with money, well-spent and well-understood by the public. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do have a couple of questions. First of all, though, I just wanted to echo what some of my colleagues have already said, that I greatly appreciate the efforts to smooth out these increases more over an eight- or 10-year time period. I think, in an ideal scenario, that's what we would have been doing all along here in Marquette, right? Is having a relatively small, relatively manageable increase each year that's matched with our long-term maintenance and replacement costs. And I also want to echo Commissioner Hill, and I believe Mayor Pro Tem Mayor, who talked about the much more balanced approach in terms of the flat rate increases versus the usage rate increases. I mean, at least, I may be wrong, but at least by my math here, looking at the typical consumer, it's actually the long-term increase through fiscal '30, the long-term percentage increase is pretty much identical for the flat rate versus the usage rate, which is definitely a positive change from what we were looking at before. So thank you for all of your work. And I certainly hear what Commissioner Hanley is saying about affordability. I do think, you mentioned that inflation is built into these increases, so hopefully that helps with those concerns a bit. But over the long run, we're not going to be increasing the cost for the typical customer more than we would have been under the previous plan, and I think it will be easier for folks to adjust than it would have been in the past. I think we're taking a much smarter approach here than maybe some other communities have done in recent years. So all that being said, I do have two or three questions. First, you mentioned this 4% to 4.5% of area median income or median household income affordability standard. Can you... I missed where you said that standard comes from.
Yeah. So where it comes from is from the EPA. So what they will do, or what they have historically done, and this is actually... They're working on updating it, but that plane hasn't completely landed. But essentially, the way it worked is, a community would be required to undergo massive capital improvements for one reason or another. One example is combined sewer overflow, so you get a lot of stormwater coming into a combined storm sewer system, so much that the wastewater plant essentially can't handle it, and they have to bypass it and let the water be discharged directly into the receiving body. So that was frowned upon, and now we have to fix that. But those problems are very, very expensive. I mean, if you think about a community that's completely combined, it's almost like redoing everything to separate, right? So those costs are very, very high. So the question is, given a fixed dollar amount, how long do communities get to do what they need to do? Because these are billion-with-a-capital-B-type projects, especially in some of these larger communities. So they were negotiating essentially around schedule with EPA, these different communities. And the way that they looked at the impact was a financial capability assessment. So that involved looking at the economic and demographic characteristics of the community. But one of the areas that they focused on was median household income, and essentially that 4.5% target, if you were above that, that went into considering a schedule extension to deal with those impacts. So the issue with affordability is, it is subjective. Someone's got to draw the line on how much is too much. And in order to make a decision, EPA set these guidelines, because otherwise, they need a basis for making the call. But there was no specific science behind it. It's just that was the cutoff that they used. It's referenced pretty frequently, so that's something that we'll typically look at.
Great, thanks. And that makes sense. I mean, I think you see a similar thing with housing affordability standards and things like that. It's a number that HUD's best guess, right? This is the EPA's best guess as to what's affordable. That makes sense. So the other question I had, this might be something that maybe our city staff actually could provide an answer to or at least follow up on. I'm curious about the impact that the utility rate increase from the previous year had on shut-offs, shut-off notices, and what we expect this sort of increase to have. I'm curious if we have any data on that. I know that the numbers from fiscal 2019 and, I believe, fiscal 2020 showed some pretty significant hardships that were imposed on households in the city by those larger increases.
So it is difficult to compare where we stand today to... So it, it is difficult to compare where we stand today to the previous, even two years, just because of what's been happening due to COVID. So back in 2020, there was an increase, obviously, to, to comparison of 2019 because of that moratorium that was placed on utility shut-offs that became, that really began just prior to our rollover for delinquent, uh, delinquent accounts onto taxes. So that did continue through 2021. That moratorium was still continued for shut-offs, and it was mandated through about, I think, the end of March in 2021. And then the city continued that moratorium through December, actually. So we had started on January 1st of 2022 to really kind of restart looking at the utility shut-off process for non-payments that we currently had on record. And there was several attempts and several notices that went out before anything really, any action had been taken. So those first shut-offs began after we submitted the rollover of the, the delinquent accounts over to taxes. And that was, was still higher than 19 because of the buildup over time. And that was continued bills that had really accumulated over those few years and become difficult to pay out of pocket. And putting it on the taxes allows for some other mechanisms, usually through escrow or, you know, buying a little bit more time with fees added to it. But it allows for residents or users to pay that a little bit differently. And, and I don't have a separation between renters and owner occupied at this moment, I can get that. But when we look at 2019, that was about 13,000. I, I, I apologize, I don't have the number of accounts that is. But in 2022, that was up to 43, 43,800. So at this point, we only have 13 accounts that are on a payment plan. And that is really our, our way to work through those financial situations is putting them on a payment plan. So 13 accounts, when we compare to the greater population, is, is really not deemed significant. But it is significant to obviously every individual owner, and, and we do, we do take that into consideration. But we work with these residents and these consumers very closely. But we need that relationship and that, that two-way communication.
Okay, that makes sense. So basically, like, we could get that data, but it might be skewed.
It's really skewed right at this moment.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
We do feel that the 13 that we do have on is, is standard, and that is nothing out of what we consider unusual or, or significant to the point where it's not manageable in our office.
Okay, good. And then I guess the, the only other major question that I had was actually prompted by what Commissioner Stonehouse was saying. Could somebody explain the, you know, the 60-day fund balance we want for stormwater? I mean, would that be sufficient if we did get a 100-year storm like Commissioner Stonehouse is talking about? I mean, what is that 60-day standard based on at the end of the day?
Colin, do, do you want to address it, or would you like me to?
Yeah, I mean, so some of it's just working capital, so dealing with the, the timing of the receipt of revenues versus expenditures. So we have to pay people monthly, but people can, can take time to pay our bills, some of them do, most of them don't, as we just heard, which is great. But there, there can be issues there. And then just kind of emergency repairs that, you know, that may need to take place. And that sort of thing. But it's really just this concept that, you know, we can't budget, you know, we try to budget as closely as we can, revenues versus expenditures. But if the unexpected happens, you know, having that money there would certainly help. If it's a major issue, we're probably going to end up borrowing to fix it. So, you know, what some communities will try to do is say, well, what's the worst thing I can think of that might happen? And we'll have that in there. The challenge is that, that's an okay approach if you've got the money already, but it can be challenging to get, to get to that point and say, well, you know, we, we need to, we need to, to get up to this large, massive capital expenditure amount, because in reality, we're probably going to borrow for it if we have a, have a major issue. And the, I think the key on the stormwater is just not so much an emergency with the infrastructure failing as much as it is just making sure it's all maintained and ready and up to standard for a large storm. Whereas on, on water, I mean, you could have a main break, like a, a big main break. You know, just in, in the news recently, obviously, they had the, the thing that happened to Great Lakes Water Authority. And that was one of their big transmission mains, and they had, you know, millions of people essentially without, without water at that point. Or the, the pump station issue that, when they had a lot of flooding, I mean, similar kind of story there, so. But the other thing that come, that enters into these reserve discussions is the volatility, and that's why we felt comfortable with a lower amount.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. My only other question or request is just if we can, if it's not already, if we can get this presentation on the city website and just in interest of transparency, a reasonable amount of time before our budget vote on the 26th, I believe. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for this presentation. I, I really liked how you walked us through this and made it clear for us. I appreciate the work that you've done to smooth out the, the costs. And, and what we have presented is more palatable than, than what we had before, as previously. I, I recognize how important it is to get to that 90-day and 60-day marks, and I believe it's a, a good investment for us. I think there's too many news stories about water problems in various cities around the country and, and here, even in our Great Lakes states, where we should have wonderful water. So maintaining that infrastructure and making sure that we get to update the, the systems that we need are, I think are worth investing the time in. And because of that, I appreciate what, what Commissioner Stonehouse was saying about the potential for major events. The quality of water is so important. And since we talked a little bit about water shut-offs, I want to go back to that customer assistance options. And I just had a clarifying question for you. Under the Michigan, I'm going to try to say, was it the LIWAP program? Is that how you?
Right.
All right. So I understand that's a residential accounts, and they need to be in arrears or disconnected. And in the, where, where we have the 150% of the federal poverty level, is that, do, if, if they reach that check mark, do they need to be in arrears? Is it a, you have to have both, or you have to have a one or the other?
So I think it's both. I, I think that should be less than 150% of the federal poverty level. So sorry about that. But, but yeah, I, I think the idea is temporary, one-time shot. You know, you're behind, you're going to get disconnected, and what can we do to basically get you, get you current? Is, is kind of the thought behind that. So I, I believe it's, I believe you have to be, it has to be both.
So if a resident is under 150% of the federal poverty level or qualifies for that other assistance and are in arrears, they could apply for that program?
That's correct.
Okay. One other quick question, and just, just so I make sure that I understand this, and it's going back to the water utility finance plans. And I see that our, our revenue decreases. I'm hoping that that's the case, and that's not my eyes deceiving me. I assume that is because of efficiencies in the equipment and also people just kind of restricting their use. What happens if we add more buildings, several housings? Because I know that you mentioned that there's no potential growth into this. Does that line come up a little bit?
Yes, I mean, the nice thing about those kinds of questions is the math's really easy. If our revenue, like if that line, you know, in a year, say something happened in, we'll say 24, for example, because we've got to make the call on this year relatively soon. But in 24, if things were 1% higher, we would need 1% less adjustment in that year. So if we have a big thing that increases it by 5% or 6%, then that may, you know, you could get to a point where, you know, you, you eliminate that. So that's, that's something that could certainly help. And sometimes if we've got something like that on the horizon, you know, we'll kind of keep our eyes on, on that as well. So if there's something coming down, coming down the pipeline, and, you know, that helps. And then sometimes you get the opposite problem, like a big user decreasing usage, which, you know, is.
Okay, well, hopefully that won't happen, and, you know, as we looked at the kind of growth in housing that we're projecting over the next, say, five years, I'd like to see that line come up. And hopefully, it was, but I understand that we also need to be conservative in our projections. So thank you very much.
I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Davis was just saying. I mean, we've got several projects on the horizon that could add up to 500 housing units in our region. That may not all be within the city. So that could change things, but there's a lot of ifs in that equation. And then just thinking about the Jacob Eddy Home for Veterans, that is likely moving facilities, and hopefully that stays in the city of Marquette. But if it doesn't, that's another piece that could impact our usage, so just some things on the horizon there. I liked what our city manager said about in five years, we're really hoping that things are looking a little better. So to me, that means that maybe we have some hope in five years to kind of change up our options and what menu of choices we have as commissioners, whoever the commissioners are at that point in time, to make some different choices if we do have some funding available. So just keeping that in mind. I appreciate this projection. I feel like it's a lot easier to digest, and, you know, obviously, we've been having to ask the public to give a lot lately and feeling, you know, that's a difficult decision for us. And this certainly isn't easy, but it's made a little bit easier. So thank you for the work to kind of recalculate. I know city staff has helped to kind of take a different look and, and really a critical eye to pieces of the formulas to make it work for us, but also work for the residents, so that compromise is much appreciated. I do think, I appreciate Commissioner Stonehouse's comments about the 60 days on stormwater. I'd like to let this ride as is, but I think that is a piece we need to reevaluate every year, especially with climate change, to see if we feel like we want to consider that every single year. You know, maybe we do have additional housing units come on that, you know, increase usage by 1%. Well, maybe that's an opportunity to leave rates the same so that we can get back to 90 days on stormwater. And, you know, just food for thought. And then one final thought on the last slide, customer assistance. It's my understanding as well that if seniors are in need of some help, that the Market Senior Center can help walk them through either these options or some other options that may be available to our senior citizens as well, just as a reminder for folks. I will turn things over to our city manager, and then I think we'll move through this meeting, because we do have a meeting coming up at 6 o'clock again, and want to get through public comment and all that, too.
And yes, I, I have noted the things that you have mentioned as well. And when we talk about storm, stormwater in particular, that one is, while it has the biggest, it looks like the biggest percentage increase, it is still a very small portion of the, the total increase that we see. So when we talk about increases to, to really address some of that, those concerns, it sounds startling, but there, there may be other possibilities for that, that it would be not as significant money-wise. So to kind of wrap this up and to talk about how this incorporates into the budgets, you do have the budget packets for the utility funds. There is one stapled, you know, packet for stormwater, water and sewer all separate. And I don't want to take a great deal of time on this, only because the, the budget that we have here is addressed through the rates to have those matching revenues. And these funds in particular are, while we have a budget, are not legally required to have a budget for them. And as a reminder, enterprise funds operate differently or are accounting for differently. And so it's sometimes when you see, you know, investments in capital, which we're not having a great deal of capital here this year, it's not accounted for necessarily in the dollars that we see here, that you would see, you know, millions of dollars coming through. So it's a little hard to, to really kind of comprehend when we see work being done with water, sewer and stormwater while the budget doesn't look like it. So the budgets remain fairly, I think, similar to prior years. They are formatted in the same exact way that we have seen all of our other budgets, and the increases for the revenue are included in here, projected out, and allow us to really get to, to have a balanced approach. And again, you can see where all of the increases or changes in the budget are outlined. But that is essentially tying into these rates or assuming that these rates proposed would also be, be passed. If they don't, then obviously the, the budget would also change as well. And that would come at the next opportunity or next meeting, or as a budget amendment.
And just so. You know, for the public, you know, folks here and folks watching, we're not voting on this today. I'm sure someone said that already, but this would be part of our overall motion on a budget at our next meeting on September 26th.
Correct. And the next step, as you will see in, in the, in the next meeting, really is to talk about the public hearing that would be scheduled. And then also, the proposed budget will be made available to the public on our website as required. And then also allows for the public to review that and prepare for that public hearing. So you will, Commission, see an updated budget packet come through with the proposed title officially, as this is still in the, the draft format, but as the proposed budget. And then that is what will be then presented on the 26th for Commission Action. So one other piece of information that you do have is just a comparison with all of our other municipalities around us within the UP and where we kind of fall within there, which is still remains right in the middle of the pack, which means we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're kind of where we need to be. And that's where we, we do tend to see where we, we fall and are most comfortable with.
Could this be added to the website as well?
Certainly.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So that is, that is the utility funds, the water, the water, sewer and stormwater rates, kind of in a nutshell. A lot of information all at once, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move into public comment, and then if we have any last quick comments from the commission, we can do that, or we can take a little break before our 6 o'clock meeting here. All right, any members of the public wishing to comment? Thank you, Colin, appreciate it. Forgot you were standing over there, my face was turned the other direction. Excellent work, we really appreciate you coming. Members of the public wishing to make a comment can approach at the center podium, three minutes to speak. Anyone for public comment at this special meeting? See no public comment? Public comment is now closed. Any comments from the commission on this before we move into our meeting? Commissioner Hill?
I'd just like to say on the question of climate change and being prepared for the, it's actually thousand-year storms. Actually, 100-year storms are the normal, just not to be too pedantic about it, but just so people understand. You, a, a 50-year storm and 100-year storm are considered normal big events. It's when you get to the 500-year and 1,000-year. And I got an alert on my phone today, Milwaukee and Racine received 10 inches of rain today. One storm. So things are, yeah, it's, it is all, it's, the extremes that were predicted are happening now. But I think rather than maybe necessarily thinking about having a reserve, we want to think about installing culverts, pipes that can handle the amount of water, that can handle that increased amount of water. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that best practice is, is going to be to installing infrastructure that can meet a 500- and 1,000-year storm, not just 100-year storm. And, and that is planning in advance rather than having a cash reserve.
Maybe both.
If we have the infrastructure, if, as you, as Colin was saying, if the infrastructure's in place, then we, then it won't break. It'll be able to handle the amount of water going through, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I only wanted to add that that was the point I was trying to make with my original comment relating to getting some stormwater set aside. Is, as an engineer officer, I learned that drainage is everything. But drainage after the event don't cut it. So you've got to be in place beforehand. We should be looking at what in the city is a weakness, what should we be fixing before it becomes a point of failure? And if you only have to look at Houghton, where there has been very, was very little investment in stormwater and drainage and related activities, and what happened because of that. And the same thing for other communities around the state that have had those cataclysmic events. Afterwards, a check for a billion bucks doesn't do me a whole lot of good. It's got to be applied before that, and that means we have to have the rates to support that sort of proactive activity, or perchance find the money on a grant program that would do that, too. So thank you for listening to me.
Any other final comments from the commission? Commissioner Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the additional information background from Commissioners Hill and Stonehouse there. I just want to say that although we are looking at a relatively modest increase this year, I think in a otherwise very difficult budget year, just like last year, this is a point I think we can look at positively, that things are looking better than we had expected and that we can have a plan, at least for our utility rates, that our residents will actually be able to adjust to and make work within their increasingly tight budgets right now.
Any other comments from the commission? City manager, any comments from you? All right, we are adjourned at 5:43 PM. That was our special meeting. We will resume at 6 PM for a regular meeting. Thanks, everyone.